The economic corporation, the economic corporation is going to take. I form call the order of the town, Dave Surgeon, Toby Collinsworth.
President.
Dave Apple, Key Chidwood, Tim Crosswell. Absent, Rhonda Williams present. I have two prayer and pledge of allegiance. You all rise please. Thank you.
Emma. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Consider discussing act upon a resolution or order of the city council. City council of the city of Blue Ridge, Texas canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election. We failed on May third, two thousand twenty five for the purpose of electing three city council members to a two year term. Day twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. For issue certificate of election and administer oath of office to the city council. So this time I need a motion to accept the resolution with you.
I'll say.
All in favor. Now on item number four. Okay. Issue certificate of election administrator oath of office to newly elected city council members. Joanie will take care of that. I know. Well, excellent, excellent. So I'm going to start with you, Quentin. So if you just repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
Name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I say your name.
I, Trent Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council person.
That I will faithfully execute the duties. Of the office of council person.
For the city of Blue Ridge, Collin County.
City of Blue Ridge.
And the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect and defend the constitution.
To the best of my ability to preserve, protect and defend the constitution.
And laws of the United States and of this state's health.
The laws of the United States and of this state's health.
So talk to me here. Okay. And by the authority of the state of Texas. In the name and by the authority. I say your name.
I, Mr. Collins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council person.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council person.
For the city of Blue Ridge.
For the city of Blue Ridge.
Collin County, the state of Texas.
Collin County, the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect and defend the constitution.
And will to the best of my ability to protect and defend the constitution.
And laws of the United States and of this state's health.
And the laws of the United States and of this state's health.
Same thing. Same thing. It is repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I say your name.
I, Wendy Mannery.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council person.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council person.
For the city of Blue Ridge.
For the city of Blue Ridge.
Collin County, the state of Texas.
Collin County, the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect and defend the constitution.
And will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect and defend the constitution.
And laws of the United States and of this state's health.
And the laws of the United States and of this state's health.
Okay. We're going to take the flag. I know. Do you later do things? Right, thank you. I was just throwing them down. Wait a minute. Getting a picture of you all together. Y'all are in some pretty outfits. You know, festive. Okay, thank you all very much. And one of the county councils. Item number five, executive session. In accordance with the Texas government code section five five one point zero zero one. The city council recessions executive session closing meeting to discuss the following. A five five one point zero zero one consultation with attorney on a matter on which the duty of the attorney. To the government of laws and the Texas disciplinary rules of national climate that state of Texas clearly compless with this chapter regarding. The Blue Ridge crossing public improvement district. Ordinance provided for the disannexation of a year after describing territory being a plus minus plus minus thirty one point nine six nine zero acres of land. Located in the N M R survey and check five seventy seven and being generally located west of F N thirteen seventy seven. North of County Road five oh two and south of F N five forty five. Collin County, Texas, further identified as being Collin Cav property ID one zero three seven four five two. Decreasing the boundary limits of the city so as to exclude the described property from the city in extra for for the limits. Three ordinance providing the disannexation of the year after described recorded being approximately plus minus one hundred forty one point two hundred fifty four acres of land. Located in the D Van Winkle survey at check nine thirty six. And being generally located at the southeast corner of F N thirteen seventy seven. And F N twenty seven fifty six, Collin County, Texas. Further identified as being Collin Cav property ID numbers two six eight seven eight four one. Two eight two three zero seven four, two eight four three six six two, two nine zero one one five zero. Two eight seven eight seven nine eight, two eight seven eight seven nine seven. And one one nine one three six five, decreasing the boundary limits of the city so as to exclude and describe property from the city in extra for for the limits. So we were going to executive session now at seven fifteen P M. This time I ask everyone to have to step out so that we come back into session. So we'll go to item number six, reconvening to open session. That will be at eight twenty three. Reconvening to open session in accordance with Texas government code chapter five five one. The city council will reconvene into open session to consider action if any on the following matters discussed in executive session. And this time we will also be moving items twelve, thirteen and fourteen up. Before we move on to public comment. So if there's anyone, as the items are brought up, if there was anyone who had a public comment regarding those items, item number twelve, thirteen and fourteen. And we entertain that. During the public hearing. Item number twelve. The Blue Ridge City Council conducted public hearing to consider comment. And act upon ordinance accepting and approving the final Blue Ridge Crossing Public Improvement District Service and Assessment Plan. Including an assessment role making a finding of special benefit property within the Blue Ridge Crossing Public Improvement District. Leading special assessments against such property and establishing a lien on such property. And providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments. Limited against the assessed property in accordance with chapter three seventy two of the Texas Local Government Code as amended. So I'll open the public hearing, sorry, this is all the. At eight twenty four. So if we have any. Or that. Item, item number twelve. Okay, so I have a few to say all. I don't know if that all considers that. Yes, if you would just state your name.
Yes. My name is John Cecil. I live here in Blue Ridge, Texas. And I just have a few questions on the P I D. I know at the last. City council meeting, we had. One representative, I believe, the developer of the home builder, I'm not sure which. Was here and they talked about that. And my question is, is what is in it for the city? If, when I read this, it says no financial cost, no liability, everything city, but it says the city. Is responsible for the administration, the S E C reporting and the foreclosures if necessary. So if the city is going to be collecting the money on the Avalon taxes. And the city is having to pay the bondholders. And the city is having to foreclose on the property. What of the. Public Improvement District money paid, does the city get to keep for itself? If they're having to hire an administrator, I don't know, but if you are to do that. Uh, is there a percentage that the city gets to keep? To for uh. For incurring the expenses that are going within this? Or is this strictly just to help the developer recoup his money for having to put in the. Uh, sewers, the deals, whatever all goes that the people that buy these homes are going to have to pay for. If we're just, if the city is just taking in the money and passing it down the line. Then I think the city should incur some type of uh, of revenue off of that. And not just the taxes on the property because you'll be getting that whether there's a P I D or not. You'll still get your, 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 the city taxes and the school district will get the school tax. So my question is just, if, if the city is having to provide all these services. And they're just passing dollar for dollar down the line. I think you ought to consider charging them a fee for having to do all that. And that's, that's really, really my only question is not clear how all that works. Thank you and congratulations to the new members. Thank you.
If you'd like to answer that question, so we have.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, thank you very much for your question. So as we talked about a little bit in the initial session. Part of the property, part of the reason for the PID is a tool that allows for that property to be annexed into the city. So to your point of the city is now getting those taxes, those taxes were not intended, this property was going to stay outside of the city prior to this tool. Uh, so that is a big part of it is, I believe it was almost seventy five million dollars worth of estimated value. Uh, in taxable value that then would be collected or that there was now going to be an assessment attached on every year. Uh, that would have been outside the city limits. So that's a big portion of what the benefit is coming to the city. Uh, with respect to the administrative pieces there, that is all part of the annual installments. So that is not coming from the city's dollars. We have our administrator here who will work for the city. But that is all paid out in self-supporting from the pit itself. So that, that's, that's really the benefit to the city, but we always appreciate that question. Happy to help if there's anything else.
There's no other regarding. Item number twelve. We'll close the public hearing at. Eight twenty nine. At this time, if there's further discussion by the council, entertain a motion or. Comments. Take the action on number four. That's what I was calling for. Sorry. I had that right. Okay, four ones. Okay, so item number twelve. So at this time we'll entertain a motion to accept item number twelve. Regarding the P I D of ordinance. Of ordinance.
Make a motion with the board number twelve.
Your motion, so I have a second. Second, all in favor. Item number thirteen. Item thirteen, consider an act upon ordinance of the city of Blue Ridge, Texas approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of the city of Blue Ridge, Texas. Special Assessment Revenue Bonds. Series twenty twenty five, where is crossing public improvement district project. Approving and authorizing related agreements and providing an effective date.
Make a motion with the board number twelve.
Item number fourteen. Consider discussing act upon a master grant with dissemination agent services with H T S continuing disclosure services. The Division Hilltop Securities Incorporated, right to the city of Blue Ridge Public Improvement District Projects.
I just want to make a. Point of information. Uh, that. On that particular ordinance, two oh two five oh five one three zero zero three. On the first page that the second where is paragraph that the correct ordinance number be inserted.
Like I said, those are just the draft because the numbers came in today, so I have the final right here that has all.
Okay, okay, and you're then with the other blank of the amount of five million eight hundred eight. Can I make a motion that we approve? Thirteen.
Fourteen. 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 All in favor. Thank you. And thank you all. Steve, we just go, are you ready? Okay, now we're back to number seven, public comment. I apologize, it's just, they can't, they don't agree. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any matter included on the agenda except public hearings. Comments related to public hearings will be heard when specific hearing begins. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker unless the speaker requires the assistance of a translator. In which the case, the speaker is limited to six minutes. In accordance with the applicable law, to address the council, speakers must complete a speaker form and provide it to the city secretary prior to the start of the meeting. The speaker shall approach front of the council and state his, her name, street address before speaker. Speaker shall address the council's ability that is conducive to appropriate public discussion. The public cannot speak in a gallery but only from the front of the council for the Texas Open Meetings Act. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any item not listed on the agenda. The council may, one, make a statement of fact regarding the item. Two, make a resuscitation, exit, exiting. Follow C or three, propose the item to be placed on future agenda in accordance with council proceedings. So we have a list here.
Excuse me, in advance of that, would you all be so kind as to speak into your microphone, please?
So first on the list here, I have Gabby Axworth. Say that she wants to come forth to speak.
Public speaking.
Oh, you're, you're kind, you're kind, no problem.
Do you want me to hold? Thank you, I appreciate it.
If you just set your name and your address, please.
I'm Gabby Axworth. Um, I'll define as my full address, but I do live here in Blue Ridge. Um, and thanks for calling on me first. Uh, so at this point, it seems clear that Blue Ridge citizens do not want a segregated exclusively Muslim community. Um, there's been pretty much an uprising speaking out against this, not only here in our own community, but I would say across the state as well. Your citizens are seeing the dangers here. We're looking at what's happening in Europe. As um, pretty much a pattern that they're trying to follow here as well. And we don't want it. So at this point, it becomes about how do we move forward from here now that the land has been annexed? Um, now that they are wanting to, you know, I'm assuming we'll be fighting back legally. Um, now that the governor, governor is involved and there are investigations happening, how do we move forward from here? And unfortunately, we do not live in a world where we can assume the best of everyone. We can't just assume that everyone wants peace, especially when you listen to the rhetoric coming out of Muslim dominated countries. Calling for the demise of the United States and the society that our forefathers have fought to leave behind to us. And now we have an obligation to leave it better than we found it. Um, for our children and our children's children. Um, so when religious extremists say that we are the great Satan and they call for our demise, we have to believe so. And when they try to come in, you know, Trojan horse style and putting on a nice face and saying, oh, all we want is. Uh, to be included in your community. We have to look at the history of what's going on in countries across the world and in other places like Dearborn, Michigan. Um, and we have to, you know, see the world with our eyes open and not be um. Not be deceived all in the name of. Not wanting to be exposed, not wanting to leave anyone out. Um, so I would call on you as city council members here as mayor that you would. Take two steps to protect our community. Um, but. And take steps that does not happen. Um, both the, that's being annexed and as well as making sure that people take advice to, for happening. Uh, in the future in Blue Ridge or surrounding areas. Thank you.
I have one scaly mission. Hi, I'm Gwen Reynolds and I'm from Farmington, Texas, K O box seven. And first I want to congratulate the new members. Bravo. I'm so glad you're here. Definitely. And also thank you to the rest of the council and the attorney, city attorney and mayor. She's, anyway, um, my, I'll be pretty short here. Um, as far as the disannexation. Um, this absolutely has to go forward. Um, developments like this are being scrutinized, not only by our governor. But by politicians all throughout the United States now, including it's been brought to hand bonding. We've got a lot going on with this sort of thing and it's the last thing we need in Blue Ridge. It's the last thing that those small town needs to deal with when you've got so much more going on. You've got all these new developments. It's hard to keep your mind on. You've got all these new developments, it's hard to keep your mind on every single development and watch it. And then we don't even have the police force, we don't have the, you know, the fire, uh, firemen to watch this. And then especially since it's so far out. So as far as the disannexation, in my opinion, it absolutely has to happen. Now, I have another issue, it needs to stay in your ETJ though. And the reason why it needs to stay in the ETJ is because you do want to have control over that property. If it goes to the county, it's going to get lost and God knows what's going to happen. And then so everyone's gonna, all of us are going to have to be going to the county all the time to file with the county commissioners and who knows where that's going to go. So I'm just asking, please do this annex, but please keep it in your ETJ so that you do have control and some say of what's going to happen here. So we can come back here if needed, we're here for you and for us.
I appreciate that. My name is Herbert Gears, I'm at four five two six Wildbrier in Irving, Texas. And, uh, I'm here tonight because I was asked to help my neighbor who's involved in this project, his name's Mr. Ansari. And I didn't know anything about the project. I did service city councilman and mayor of Irving for twelve years. Got one of the largest mosques in our city, got a couple of them. And, uh, I don't know, seven, eight hundred million dollars worth of tax base, you know, because big beautiful homes are built, uh, that sort of thing. And I was told, heck, things are rocking and rolling, I've been working on this project for five years. City staff supports it, whole city council, the mayor's okay with it. You got one last piece, you know, the development agreement is part of the PD zoning, which is normal component. PD zoning is a good thing, by the way, for cities, because that's how you can control development standards, states taking away your rights to do that so much, and so I thought, okay, well, it should be easy, they've worked on that long and everybody's okay with. And then, uh, I watched the meeting and learned a lot more about the project, about the people's concerns. And in my role as mayor of Irving, it was, it was, it was the primary priority to listen to what my residents said. You know, when we first had this mosque get built, it was controversial, I mean, we had armed gunmen protesting out in front of Jamar uh, with bomb rifles and everything, remember Irving was the place where the fourteen year old was arrested, the clock boy, you remember him? Uh, that happened in our city, I wasn't mayor at that time. Uh, we did make the right decision, but what happened in that process, as it all panned out. So we've had, we've had a lot of conversations in our community about, uh, Muslims. And of course Irving is a very faithful community, I was baptized in a Baptist church. And, you know, I heard about the fears. Uh, I looked at the population numbers and, you know, I'm all about, you know, how many people vote and all of that, so fears are justified in, in some version, we don't have that issue in Irving, we have two hundred fifty thousand people. And so we don't worry too much about that, and, you know, issues drive participation in local matters. And we may have heard about Sands Corporation from Las Vegas coming in and buying a couple hundred acres next to our sacred former Texas stadium site. And wanted to build the world's largest casino with a big arena, they go, they bought the Mavericks, they're going to bring the Mavericks to Irving and a big hotel and a two million square foot convention center. And they wanted to build a casino and they came forward with zoning case. Yeah. Okay, can I have just like ten more seconds? Okay, just what I want to tell you is, is we were asked by the city, we deemed that I wasn't on the times to be annexed. And we do not have an issue with being disannexed. It wasn't our idea to begin with. We're kind of wondering why nobody told us, you know, this was on the agenda. Uh, but that's okay. You know, we're, we're not gonna, you know, we have nothing to prove and there's no, there's no subversive mission here, I've seen a whole lot of things that people one day might not be proud of what they said, you know, having their own community, anyway. I just, I'm the only one here from the, from the project and I just want to let y'all know that, that, uh, we're okay with the disannexation.
Thank you. Sherry Wheeler?
Oh, I have nothing to say, sorry, I didn't know much about this stuff, okay?
Mike, the Monica? D O M A N.
Roger Little? Good evening, everyone, I'm Roger Little, I live here in, uh, Blue Ridge, Texas. Congratulations to all the new council members and the current members. Miss Mayor, thank you all for your service to the community, we appreciate you. I am here tonight to support the disannexation of two properties. I would tell you, I think you know, everybody here in Blue Ridge, once we found out what was going on opposed it. And there's multiple, multiple reasons. I want to commend the council for recognizing that there was errors in the procedures and to bring it to disannexation quickly. And I, I do commend you all for that, I know we'll vote tonight, hopefully you will. But I do want you to know this, the new council members that was elected, there's a reason why you were elected. And we're all supporting each and every one of you, and no matter what happens in the future, we have your back. So, uh, we're all in it together, I hope everybody here stays involved in the community because we really need that, that is the one thing that brought this community together. And I just, uh, pray for this council every day, that God gives you the wisdom, the knowledge and the understanding to do everything by his will, that he wants, so thank you all very much.
Kristen McFormic? I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Kristen McFormic, I am not a, a citizen of Blue Ridge, I drove all the way up here from South Texas because I'm very interested in what's going to happen here. Uh, we're, we're seeing the similar things happening down in my area. And I just wanted to express, I won't take a lot of time, I think the voices of the people in the city are more important than mine, but I just wanted to say, the decision in how y'all handle this situation is going to affect the whole rest of the state. You're going to create a blueprint that is going to be used through the rest of the state, good, bad, or otherwise. So I apologize that that responsibility has fallen to the lovely small town of Blue Ridge, but it has. And you have an important thing in front of you, this is not a small issue, it will affect the entire state. So I just ask that you do what you think is best, what the people of this city want, and I thank you for your time.
And Mustafa Carroll? Mustafa Carroll? Says on here, just sitting here, she's called in, city politics. Uh, Camille Sheen?
I didn't plan on speaking, but I will, since I've had the opportunity to say hello to all the new council, past council, and mayor. I'm so happy we have this opportunity tonight to have this meeting about this annexation thing. None of us want it, I pray that none of y'all want it. I don't think we need it in our small community. We have other issues that are bigger than we can handle without taking on those issues. So I hope that each and every one of the council members has looked over this situation and have decided to de-annex these people. Thank you.
Emmett Collier?
Wallace. Hi, my name's Eric Waller, uh, I actually live less than a mile from the property that's been annexed. There's lots of issues that have been spoken about it tonight, my neighbors got letters when this started, not many of them really knew what was going on. So I didn't get a letter, but I live again, less than a mile, so what goes on at that property is going to impact me and my young family. Uh, but I don't have a vote because I'm not involved in the annexation, I'm still outside of city limits. I'm still in the ETJ, I don't get an opportunity to really have any say in what's happening over there. So I'm here tonight to express my concern, I support the de-annexation of this property. We don't have the infrastructure there, I brought, I bought land there in twenty eighteen, there's, there's no infrastructure to support a property of this size, a development of this size. I had to bring in water around the corner, you know, three hundred, four hundred feet just to get to my one plot. There's not enough roadway, there's not sewer. And then what's going to happen is they're going to be inside city limits, right now in Collin County, as you most likely know, you have to have at least an acre to build a property. Well, when this becomes city limits, I don't know what the rules are here in Blue Ridge, but I assume they're going to be able to board more, build more than one house per acre. That's going to put a huge strain on the community that I live in. It's not adjacent to your city. And what's going to happen is they're going to build all these houses, and they being Muslim or not, doesn't matter to me honestly, although I do believe there is a lot of concern here. I think that that is a big issue that we need to discuss and understand, we didn't understand that, my neighbors didn't understand that until recently. But there's going to be a lot of that culture that grows there, and they're going to have control over the constituency here in this town. And then those of you that are here on these, in these seats now, will not be there anymore. They're going to vote you out. And that's just the truth of the matter, and if that's truly what's going to happen, I can't predict the future, we don't have crystal balls, but that's what we've all been told. Right, that's the news that came out. And honestly, some of the research that I did, some of the links and websites that I've gone to, some of them have been taken down. Some of them have been cleared of some of this information because of these meetings and these proceedings and the concern of this community. So I like what was just said by the person from South Texas here, young woman. This is a blueprint for what's going on, there's a lot of concern for this across the nation and the state of Texas. It's making headlines everywhere, and this decision that you're making on this is going to have impact on that. I don't want you all to be a part of a bad decision. Okay, I don't want this group here to have to deal with that either, I don't want to have to be a part, I have a brand new house, I just moved in a couple of years ago, I don't want to be next to all this. I moved out into the country from the city to get away from people. Not to build, not to be next to a huge development like this. So thank you for those who have come from out of town to come support this cause, but once again, I support the de-annexation of this property, appreciate your time tonight.
Good evening, first I want to thank each and every one of you as being a volunteer to do these jobs, I know it's difficult, a difficult job. And I appreciate the, the five people that ran for office and the three that were elected just recently, so thanks again. And, um, I know y'all are faced with some big decisions, but honestly, they're pretty simple, they're not really hard decisions regarding a disannexation. And, um, uh, regarding these two properties, I think it should be an easy decision to move forward with tonight. I actually went ahead and took the time, I read all the documents myself multiple times, and I even hired my own attorney to look it over. And you guys are set, good to go, you're not going to get in any legal trouble for disannexation. Now, we know that always, anybody can sue anybody. But from what I've read and my attorney read, section forty-three point zero zero five is a required disclosure before annexation agreement. A lot of the documents that were supposed to have been done originally when this was annexed were not handled properly. So to be honest with you, according to the B section of that Texas election, excuse me, it's Texas Local Government Code, section B, it says that this annexation is null and void because it was never handled properly to begin with. So there should be no problem in disannexing because it actually was never annexed properly to begin with. And, um, I want to thank the people that are here in this room and that everybody that came out to vote because I think it's wonderful that Blue Ridge is engaging, and I know that each and every one of you on this council love Blue Ridge or you wouldn't be here, you wouldn't be volunteering for these jobs, so I thank you for that. And I thank you for all the people that are here that did vote, because we really, we need everybody here. And it's wonderful too, that the people, like I'm in the ETJ area, but I can't vote, but I'm very concerned because it affects me and my property values as well. So thank you for doing the right thing, please don't kick the can down the road, go ahead and make a decision tonight, don't delay the decision, thank you.
Debbie Rose, Davis? Damon Crone? James Wheeler?
I made a mistake, I have no.
I'm having a hard time reading these things. Morgan Collier? Taco, Texas.
So I'm Morgan Collier and I'm here from Titus County, we, I'm here representing Accountability Matters, we have an association that's concerned about this. So, good evening, mayor and council members, we concerned Texans stand before you to respectfully expect answers about the troubling affiliations of a developer involved in a proposed project on the land within Blue Ridge. As Texans, we insist that the city council vote to de-annex this land from Blue Ridge to protect your community and our state. Our questions are urgent and we expect clear direct responses. Suhana Kareem, listed as the manager of Hamra Princeton eighteen LLC, a subsidiary of Hamra Homes, has publicly celebrated Hamas, a US designated foreign terrorist over the organization on social media. She explicitly praised the October seventh attacks, which involve kidnapping civilians, brutally murdering innocents and spewing hateful rhetoric against the West. What is the city council's official stance on a developer tied to someone who openly supports terrorism and calls for violence against Western nations holding influence over land in Blue Ridge? Why has this not been addressed with the urgency it requires? Since Kareem's disturbing endorsement of Hamas's violence and her hateful comments about the West came to light, the city has remained silent. There's a public statement noting the developer's fat affiliations. Does the city believe it's inappropriate for a project led by someone who celebrates terrorism and promotes hatred against America to remain under your jurisdiction? Then we have an issue of business records, press coverage exposed Kareem's celebration of Hamas appears to have been prompted, sorry, appears to have prompted the developer to quietly remove her name from records tied specifically to the proposed Blue Ridge project while leaving it on other related developments. Why has this selective scrubbing occurred? What does the city know about this sudden change and why hasn't the council addressed these concerning ties? Does the city find it acceptable that a developer is altering records to evade accountability for affiliations with terrorism? How does the city plan to guarantee that this development won't become a religious enclave governed by non-American legal standards as we've seen in other Texas projects? as we've seen in other Texas projects? What measures are in place to prevent public infrastructure and taxpayer money from supporting a project linked to individuals who glorify terrorism? De-annexing this land is the surest way to protect Texas resources from funding extremism. On legal compliance, why did the city fail to immediately report the developer's attempt to remove the anti-BDS laws from a municipal contract to the Texas Attorney General? This is a clear violation of state law. What legal action will the city pursue to ensure future contracts comply with laws protecting against boycott movements targeting Israel? Why has this breach been ignored? On community safety and values, does the city recognize that allowing this project to remain within your borders could be seen as endorsing developers who publicly support terror groups? That's sedition and a violation of your oath to uphold the Texas Constitution and the United States Constitution. How does the city reconcile such a project with Blue Ridge's core values of community safety and patriotic integrity? The council must de-annex this land and send a clear message that Blue Ridge and Texas wholly reject those who seek to undermine and destroy our country and constitutionally secure one true God-given liberties. We respectfully...
Thank you.
We've got Carrie Allen?
Hi. I'm Carrie Allen, and I live here in the city of Blue Ridge. First, I wanted to congratulate all the new council members and thank y'all for serving, as well as the council members who have been serving. And next, I wanted to thank the mayor for accepting the petition that was circulated and signed by roughly 80 in-city voters. That was to request the removal of the properties referenced in items number 10 and 11 from the city limits of Blue Ridge. I recognize that the mayor sets the agenda, and I really appreciate y'all listening to the voters. However, the petition that was submitted was requesting the removal of these properties from the city only and not from the ETJ. We're in this position because the annexations were rushed and hushed. We can see that they were rushed by the many mistakes, missing documents, missing signatures, missing exhibits, and filing failures found in the official ordinances received via open records requests and what has been filed by the county clerk. It was hushed by not listening to the many residents and interested parties whose concerns noted in meeting minutes were simply ignored and by the lack of required notices given as revealed by open record requests. I implore the council to listen to the voters this time and honor the petition request as submitted by voting to remove the properties from the city but not the ETJ. Thank you.
Dan Sampson?
I'm Dan Sampson, and I live in Blue Ridge, Texas. And congratulations to the new council members and the existing council members. I just want to state that I support the de-annexation of this property. Blue Ridge is now nationwide, now worldwide, now. And everyone has eyes on this. It wasn't done properly. The proper documentation wasn't submitted. If you need to de-annex it, then move on. And I'm hoping that the new council members will have an influence over that decision. And please, please reconsider and de-annex this. I think it should be left in the ETJ, but you need to de-annex it in the city. And all the points that everyone's made, we don't have the resources, we don't have the support, we don't have the fire department, the water, everything else that goes along with that. It's 10 miles away. And there's just no reason to even do it. So please, please, again, consider this matter and do it soon. Don't keep kicking the can down the road like someone else said. And make a decision and move on. Thank you so much.
Sabrina Gamble?
Hi, Sabrina Gamble, 8239 Morgan Road in Blue Ridge. And I'm just simply supporting the de-annexation referenced in Agenda Items 10 and 11, but I do not support the removal from the ETJ.
Alex Gamble, 8239 Morgan Road, Blue Ridge, Texas. As a Jesus Christ believer, I thank you, mayor, council members, new council members. Appreciate the work that you're doing. And I support the annexation of properties on item number 10 and 11 and agree that they should not be removed from the ETJ. Also, keep this in mind in the written word of God in Ephesians 2:10. Instead, we are God's accomplishment, created in Christ Jesus to do good things. God planned for these good things to be the way that we live our lives. So continue on that, stand on that, and let it be known that we're going to win this. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott. I'm from Paris, Texas, Lamar County. I'll make this quick, short, easy, and simple congratulations to the newbies who got elected. Remember why you got elected and how and who elected you. Do your homework. Look this up. The people behind you have told you they don't want this. They are your community. You work for them. They don't work for you. What's planned or the potential of coming into your community, Blue Ridge, Texas, is on the radar. Somebody from South Texas, somebody from Taco, somebody from Lamar County, and others, you're on our radar. You have the opportunity to do something. And as a county chairman of the Republican Party in Lamar County, people ask me why I do these things. These people behind me have heard this. I don't do it for myself. I don't do it for people my age. This is an opportunity for Blue Ridge, Texas, to say timeout. Not in my small town. You do it for their kids, their grandchildren, your grandchildren, and everything, and so on and so forth. Their goal is to take over Texas. Okay? They will publicly post this on the old interweb and let people know they want to take over Texas, and they start here in the little areas because they're already in some of the bigger areas. Okay? There's no way, shape, or form you can support what they're trying to do and take over Texas because they know if they take over Texas and they win Texas, they take over the United States. No one will try to take over this country militarily. That's a mistake. So what do you do? You take it out from the inside. Do your homework and look up and see what they want to do and see what this culture is all about. And for whatever reason, they tell you it's religion. It's not. It's a system of governance. That's exactly how it is. So I implore you to listen to your constituents. De-annex this property. They're basically here to beg you. This is a great showing of citizenry coming to tell you, hey, this is why we voted for you. This is what you're here to do. And from outsiders, we can hail Blue Ridge, Texas, and say, look, they did it. Thank you.
I'm Carolinoz, and my address is on file. I live here in the city of Blue Ridge. Moved here 21 and never expected this much growth in such a short period of time. We've got a lot of people wanting to move here, wanting this way of life. And I fully support the de-annexation because proper paperwork wasn't filed. People in the future that are turned down by the city of Blue Ridge can use this lack of proper procedure to enforce the hand or tie you up legally. And women who doesn't need that can't afford that. So I support the de-annexation, and I thank you for new members coming on board.
Hello, City Council. Congratulations, and thank you for serving. I have brief topics of questions and ideas for your consideration. First, have you considered the possible vulnerability of city records being housed at an external location such as a paid contracted attorney or others? Will you please consider returning city documents to city possession and city control? Second, regarding large acres of properties previously discussed, let's talk about firefighters. It was mentioned briefly. Firefighters are in short supply in cities and towns all around us, and this is a public safety issue. Collin County is now creating emergency service districts to try to bridge the gap in fire protection and emergency services. Have you considered pausing or stopping approval and any work on developments until the fire response infrastructure is addressed? Other nearby cities have done that. You won't be the first. Have you added new developments to the ESD discussion? What will be the response time for emergency and fire personnel to reach new developments if there's already gaps in service? It's a public safety issue. Have you spoken to the fire department leadership about how many new firefighters are needed and how many fire vehicles are needed? These vehicles cost three-plus million each and take three to four years to obtain. Have you discussed how long it will take for new firefighters to be hired and fully trained? Have you discussed the impact and the cost with citizens? Third, when you consider developments at the previous meeting, what is your knowledge? Let's try something new. Endangered species in Collin County that the developments can impact. Have you reviewed any Blue Ridge flood maps? Are you aware of how many endangered species are in Collin County? I counted 58 on the Parks and Wildlife website. Have you considered pausing or stopping any work on developments until endangered species can be researched? The text dot access management manual, new topic on the Blue Ridge website, is from 2011. Would you agree it is woefully outdated? It does not reflect rapidly changing requirements and developments. Have you considered pausing or halting developments until it can be addressed? Fifth, is it true that property developments discussed in the last meeting include only one point of entrance? Would you consider the multiple entrances is more in line with community? Have you considered multiple entrances provide traffic management, vehicle navigation, and rapid egress during emergencies? It is a public safety issue. Will you consider not giving up control of the number of entrances, street plans, and street naming to others? Have you considered stopping or pausing development work until the state attorney general, Texas Rangers, and DOJ investigations, which are currently underway, are complete? I've lived and worked overseas and worked in the Middle East. I'm happy to share the packet that I gave to Tom Homan with any of you offline, if you wish to meet. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I just wanted to thank the city council that has been serving and then our new city council members. Also, they're not here, but I wanted to thank the former city council and also the people who ran and also our city employees and our mayor and our attorney. So I am obviously wanting the de-annexation to occur. I would be very bold to say I would love for them to throw their hands up, leave, and I would do everything I could to keep that land to be farmland. And I think since the gentleman that spoke earlier thinks it's such a fine idea that they should find 200 acres over there in Irving and get busy building and helping out. Growth for Blue Ridge should be diverse and inclusive, not dividing and exclusive. And I just love living here, and I love my community. And I really sincerely mean it when I say I understand you're giving your time that goes way beyond this meeting tonight, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
I'm Randy Strath from Climax, Texas. You can't miss my house. What I got to say is I moved out of the country from Princeton because Princeton started getting full of people. And I took my children out there and my wife, and she raised three really good men. They're stand-up men, contributing members to society. Little by little, I've stood there and watched everything change around me. And y'all got above my pay grade real quick when you started talking about, should we annex it? Should we not? We shouldn't do this. We shouldn't do that. I kind of got an idea of it. I just want you, I want to tell you what I value, and I hope you'll think about that when you vote. I don't envy y'all a bit for what you're going through. But I moved out there for peace and quiet. I moved out there so that we wouldn't have dogs run over by people running up and down roads at 100 miles an hour. Well, guess what's come to me? Y'all who have lived here know where Climax is. Everybody else is like, that ain't true. You're lying. No. Well, me and my wife used to laugh about how fast the signs would come up and go down. We said, I bet it ain't going to last 10 days this time. Them kids have had. Well, we raised our family in a traditional manner. And I'm proud to say that those boys, that's what caused her blessed. And I'm not going to make this about religion. I'm going to make it about facts. And facts are, my house will be burnt down before someone gets out there to it. And I took that on myself by moving out there. These guys ain't going to be fast enough, and Princeton ain't going to be fast enough. We've had emergencies out of the house, and ambulance took 45 minutes to get there, so we can't count on them. And the police department, they just don't know who's going to show up, and then sometimes they all show up. The highway patrol, the county, and Princeton will come out because they ain't got nothing to do that night. So I say the infrastructure's not there. My water pressure's dropping all the time. And they're going gangbusters between me and Blue Ridge, building houses fast as they can so that nobody will notice them, and they're between me and the water. So that's about all I've got to say. I thank you for your time. Have a good one.
Hello. I'm his wife. I'm Janice. And as I've stood up here and spoke at every meeting since this has come up, I'm here to say I support the de-annexation of that. I am grateful to be able to stand here tonight where we open up with a Christian prayer and pray in Jesus' name and to pledge allegiance to the United States flag. And I wonder, if this happens, how long we're going to be able to do this? Because their voters are going to be coming out, whereas you could tell from the last election, not many. We've gotten lax. We've gotten really lax where we're not turning out to vote. And everyone is going to be voted out. So I'm grateful to be able to do that. He was speaking about a fire. My brother's home is 200 feet from the land that they're wanting to build at. His house burned down to the ground two years ago. Nothing. So is there a fire department? There were several that came there after they were able. Who's going? I don't know. Let's get Anna. Let's get, you know, his house burned to the ground, and that is right where they're wanting to build. Also, the letter, someone mentioned the letter that was sent out to everybody. I was one of the ones that did receive a letter. That letter stated it was about 98 acres. I received that. It was dated October 17. I don't know how. I've been looking through the minutes of the last meetings. Now it's 141 acres. That's grown. I only received one letter about the 98 acres. So I guess the other 40-something acres were grandfathered in. My property is right there, too. Am I going to get grandfathered in? I mean, I know that's not the way it's supposed to work, but it was 98 acres that a herd of people came here and spoke out against. And there was only people that stood asking for it was the ones building it, and all they said is, we want to build homes. And they started out with saying about 90, and then by the end of the thing, it was about 112, 116. But when we looked at their... But when we looked at their plans, it was apartment buildings. It was the businesses. So everything is kind of shady and muddy that we have seen so far. We vote on one thing. The vote went completely against what was said, and there was even two motions that died, but yet it still got passed. I don't understand how that happened. So I just don't understand. So I'm asking, I'm begging you guys. I'm like her. I wish it could just go away. I wanna thank the people that have traveled from miles and miles away, because this means something to us and have dug through red tape. There's people here that have done hours in hopes that you guys will listen, and we're begging. Please.
Hello, I'm Gail Cotton. I live at County Road 1065, and I'm in your ETJ. And I'm within less than a quarter of a mile from where this is all going on. Okay, there's the other one in Josephine, but we're talking about this one because it affects me. I've lived there twenty-eight years. Do I like all my neighbors? No. Do they like me? No. If we have issues, yes, and we resolve them pretty good. But anyway, this is not about liking these people or not liking these people. They are associated with the terrorism. I have researched it and researched it, and I've come up with everything. And I feel like it's your responsibility to do that, not mine to have to come up here and educate you on it. You should be educated on it, because what you decide affects my property value, my values as a human being, and my safe in my home. Am I gonna have to load two guns instead of one? You know? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm an old redneck. I've been shooting guns since I was five. But anyway, I can't, I talked to a lady today, and she said, well, my sister is a conservative Muslim. In my opinion, whether it sounds like crap or not, I don't care. You're either a hundred percent Muslim or you're not, just like a Baptist, a Pentecostal. Either you are completing in your faith or you're not. Okay, so you might know ten people that you believe are the good ones. Well, there's a hundred thousand over here that are not, and they will tell you that. I have not seen one person in any of these meetings that has represented them to say, we want, we're the good people. Not one. And there's like literally a fourth of a mile from my house. The cemetery's there, full of veterans that fought for this country. They're not gonna come in here and apply to fight in the services for anybody. I mean, my uncle was Korea. My dad was Germany. I have, my grandson's in the Marines right now, San Diego. Been in eight years and just signed up for another twelve years. My grandson should have to fight against people in our own country. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were just gonna, I thought you came up. Come on back.
It's all.
John Cecil, Blue Ridge, Texas, again. And I'm here to say I support the deannexation of the properties on items ten and eleven and keep it in the ETJ. I think that would be the best, so it doesn't turn over to the county. You get those county commissioners, and next thing you know, they're all thinking about themselves. And I hope that new council members and current council members are thinking more about the community than just what's best for me. On these developments, and I think you have to ask yourself, why? The question is, why? Why do they wanna be in the city? Ten, eleven miles out here, outside of town, why do they wanna be in the city? And not just them, but future developers. You drive out of town, you head out that way, you go past the D.R. Horton Homes right there. They're not in the city, and they're what? Three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. They're not in the city. You go a little further down towards Climax. It's new homes for some. They're six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes. They're not asked to be in the city. So as these developers wanna be in the city, you need to ask yourself, why? You know, so they can tell the potential home buyers, hey, guess what? You can pay city taxes. You know, just like this Blue Ridge Crossing that we were just talking about. Why do they wanna be in the city? So they can tell people, hey, guess what? You get to pay for a PID and pay in the city taxes. It's a great selling point. You know, when I went out there to the D.R. Horton Homes and talked to them, they told me, hey, we're not in the city. So I think you have to ask yourself, why this development that's all in question? Why do they wanna be in the city? And if you follow the old saying, follow the money. If you follow the money, people have said where it leads. It's gonna lead to overseas. That's where the money comes from, comes into this country. Heck, it's probably our own tax money that they get from the government agencies, and then they bring it back over here and develop and do their own. So I hope you vote for the deannexation. And future developments, I think you need to always ask yourself, why? Why do they wanna be in the city? Not just, oh, you can collect tax money, but what's the end run of their reason for that? Thank you.
Items of community interest, pursuant to section five five one point zero four one five of the Texas government code, Mayor and City Council are reporting items of community interest, including expressions of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city events, information about community events, and announcements involving an intimate threat to public health and safety. No action will be taken on any of these community interest items. We have our three new council members, Wendy Maglin and the Brett Brawley. I wanna say a different name. I've known Linda forever, so I had a hard time getting in a transition.
Welcome.
We enjoy, we're glad you're here. We look forward to working with each and every one of you. I'm sorry. Welcome aboard. Item number nine. All matters listed under consent agenda for discussion and possible actions are considered to be routine by the City Council and require little or no deliberation. There will not be a separate discussion of these items, and the consent agenda items will be enacted by one vote. If a council member expresses desire to discuss a matter listed on the consent agenda, the item will be considered separately. A, discuss, approve, or disapprove the minutes for special session until March tenth, twenty twenty-five, and special session until March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. B, public works update. C, city financial report. D, fire department report. E, animal patrol report. F, new permit report. G, write-offs for utility billing. That's all in the package. Are there any questions regarding the new items?
Not having been on prior, I had a couple of questions about budget items. Is that something that I could like address with Joni? I mean, are there just kind of questions about what does this mean? What does this cover?
It doesn't really need to be done. Yeah, okay. Yeah. I do have a couple of questions.
The decision questions. All in favor? Second. All in favor?
Consider discussing act upon ordinance providing for the deannexation of the hearing after hearing after described territory being approximately plus minus thirty-one point nine six nine zero acres of land located in the M. N. survey, extract five seven seven, and being generally located west of FM thirteen seventy-seven, Central County Road five oh two, and south of FM five forty-five, Collin County, Texas, further identified as being Collin Cab property ID one zero three seven four five two, decreasing the boundary limits of the city, so as to exclude described property from the group from the extraterritorial limits.
I'd like to make a motion to amend. My motion is to remove all references to the extraterritorial limits in the document, which I found. Six references to that.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the ETJ's instructions. Just add a second or a third section. Can I have a second?
You have a second?
I have a second. I'm sorry. I didn't see. Okay, so Wendy's, and then Trent's seconds. All in favor? Item number eleven. Consider discussing act upon ordinance providing for the deannexation of the hearing after described territory being approximately plus minus one forty-one point two five four acres of land located in the D. Van Limpel survey, extract nine thirty-six, and being generally located at the southeast corner of FM thirteen seventy-seven and FM twenty-seven eighty-six, Collin County, Texas, further identified as being Collin Cab property ID two six eight seven eight four one, two eight two three zero seven four, two eight four three six six two, two nine zero one one five zero, two eight seven eight seven nine eight, two eight seven eight seven nine seven, and one one nine one three six five, decreasing the boundary limits of the city so as to exclude described property from the city and extraterritorial limits.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance and take out all references to extraterritorial rights limits, which I counted here in one, two, three, six. Okay.
I'm sorry, Wendy. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? I'm fifteen, correct?
That's right.
I'm fifteen. Consider discussing act upon, second, sort of, right about Blue Ridge, do you think it's more restricted? Do you have any information regarding that? Or that, I'm pretty much, and it's like, we're, we're DSD, so we can, hey.
Make a motion to throw number fifteen.
Second. That will be one. All in favor? And then number sixteen, discussion of placing items on future agendas. Will you do anything this time? We'll get that. Linda?
I'm just a city administrator.
David? Items seventeen, the German? It's on the check.